Thank you all for joining us tonight. The time is 7:10. I'd like to immediately call the board. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Lassman.
Here.
Please drop.
Here.
Here and decorum is present. The first item on the agenda, audience comments. We have one audience member that has signed up, Ms. Janelle Sharon.
Do you want me to go without a mic? Is that okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yes, I just had three. One of my questions was around the board agenda. If it was possible to send it via email at least a day before. I know Courtney sends out blasts about different things going on in the district. It'd be really helpful to have that agenda electronically. I'm really grateful that Ms. Haley Marty actually reminds me in her emails to me as a parent. But otherwise, I think it'd be helpful if we could have that. My second prompt is just around the diversity dinner. So, thank you to the committee who actually hosted and Dr. Smith. But my question is what comes next? And so, for example, one of the suggestions I might have for you all is just around, you're in curriculum season, you're also thinking about discipline. Could you invite us as a community or parents to actually talk about what you're doing around diversity, around curriculum across the district and discipline from the K through A grade? That would be really helpful and insightful and I think we could offer our feedback as well in partaking in that diversity series and sort of moving from symbolic representation, identity, we put it together, you guys did it, to a place of actual action and understanding what you're doing in the classrooms. And then lastly, just around, I'm one of those people, you send a survey, I've done like all your surveys. However, I feel like the surveys have gone into the black hole of the universe and I have no idea outside of the state surveys, like for example, your strategic planning surveys, what you did with the survey, what was the outcome of the survey? Really love to know what were the results of it? Did you end up using it for your strategic planning and vision setting? Because otherwise, maybe I shouldn't be doing those surveys. They do take time and figuring out which survey to do and not do is something I'm also trying to prioritize. So, those are the three things I was hoping that maybe you all could consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think the agenda is...
Oh, do you like our constant contacts? Because we said on Thursday nights, we send out a constant contact that does the agenda information.
Now, I do, I'm not on the list, sir. And finding it on your website is like digging in a treasure. Maybe you can find it, maybe you cannot find it. So, yeah, I rely heavily on my school principal to be able to tell me. There's a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm making sure you're on the list because we send those out.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't it make sense to do like a biannual or quarterly email out just to say, is there anyone who's not getting these constant contacts or whatever? Harvey?
Or how about if you have some contact, we know, then they won't get that.
Or send a blast to each parent saying, would if you are interested in receiving an email, come see about our feedback.
Actually, we have, yes. And also, we have postcards to hand out.
Oh, true.
Because we know that we have populations in our community that we're not reaching. So, we have some information to hand out, but it's pretty easy for people to find our stuff on the keyword. Yeah, so along those lines, to make sure that parents, community members know where they can find our stuff because absolutely, you should have that information in your fingertips. But it's a way to get involved, so we can have a way to hear that. And then I'll give the diversity dinner piece as well, is that okay?
Thank you.
One other thing, in terms of the surveys, I can tell you that a lot of conversation went into the survey information, particularly with the strategic planning. That was a focal point and really looked at individual content.
Well, so maybe instead of me having to come to the meeting and hear that, maybe an email or, you know, just an update. I do appreciate you letting me know because it does sometimes feel like, where does the survey data go and where's the feedback? Especially given that that's such an important part of the district's move in the next five years.
Sure, and that's something that over the last, I want to say, two or three years, since we've really started the community engagement community, we've really stressed the importance of, we're not doing surveys just to say we can survey. We're using that survey data and we are really going to be true to our feedback and our engagement we get from the community.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Western Avenue, recognition, Western Avenue's school bus helpers.
Isabel, you want to come on up? Help us. You want to read this very?
It doesn't matter either way.
Yeah, I'll be doing it. So, the Western Avenue bus helpers are an integral part of dismissal time. These fifth grade students help kindergarten and first grade students get to where they need to be for the afternoon dismissal. They have shown that they are very responsible and that utilize their relationship building skills to get to know all of their students. The bus helpers even initiated being able to hand out Wolfpack tickets for great behavior. The younger students look forward to seeing their bus helpers each day. Mrs. Karanti and Mrs. Wajnovich, who are chartered kindergarten and first grade bus riders, often happen that the students have their mark for the job and that they are good parents and are the best bus helper. That's the primary mistake in your elementary schools. We certainly are happy to have the students out, it's very important work that they do at the school. So, well, when I call your name, if you would come on up, we'll take a fancy picture and then we'll let all the moms and dads come up as well. It's one of those days where I do need the glasses. Caleb Bruno. Come on up. Put your paper the right way. Excellent. Very proud of you guys. Everybody good? Okay. Guys, thank you so much for the work.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports, learning and instruction.
We want everyone to stay, but if you're looking to leave, this is probably, if you're the most natural break point for it, but feel free to stay. Learning and instruction. We just had a meeting. Careful on the cam, any insights? If you'd like to share, drop the minutes from our meeting out there so we kind of have a guideline.
We talked a little bit about the science update pilot that is happening right now with an anticipated implementation of the new science curriculum beginning this fall. We also talked a little bit, or quite a bit, about the transition from fifth to sixth grade and what we can do to better support our fifth graders as they enter sixth grade, but also how we can support parents and help them thinking about what is important or what they need to know or what it looks like to be a sixth grader. So, one of the things that we talked about is putting together some type of informative handout for parents to look at over the summer for all transition points, but specifically targeting writing so that parents know what it looks like to be a good writer at the end of each grade level. And then, those are the names, are there any?
Oh, you go first.
No, we just kind of wrapped up with, okay, what's our, we talked a lot about all these things and how to get action. I think the consensus was that when the departments can come back with their plans for the board, any color may, and the pieces of things that should be in there. So, homework and grading practices, what you make of that, really long-term, as well as we can. Plus, addressing some of the writing literacy issues and then, you know, specialized ones and things like that. So, that's the, I think, tentative plan is bringing those to the board in May.
Major.
Can we, just to add a quick question on the science update. Can we articulate with what the goal is with what we're doing in science and where we're trying to go?
You mean what we're doing currently or where?
Where you will be, where you hope to be.
Well, I think right now, we need materials and instructional practices that are aligned with the next generation science standards, and we don't have those. I think the team's really looking at materials, one, that we think we can reasonably implement and obviously, I'm not going to steal anything from the board. But I would say right now, just like with literacy math, we need to match our materials and our expectations of practices with current materials that provide the rigor, that match the proper standards and match our, the instructional practices that we should be using. But if you just want to give it a quick...
Yeah, and in addition to that, I would just add that we're looking for hands-on student experiences that will help bring standards to life for students and create those opportunities for them to engage with the standards, not just on paper, but through labs, through projects, through various avenues that they can really start to say, okay, in third grade, this is what I experienced in science, I'm going to do these projects and sort of come to expect those opportunities.
Are all of the grades piloting this? Who is doing this representation across schools and across schools? Okay, so would your kids at home say, I did this for science?
Not every teacher.
Okay, not every teacher.
But we have representation.
Okay, so maybe.
Okay, all right, question. I'm really interested in science a lot too. So, I guess I was hoping to hear more, like where are we now? Where we're going? I'm not trying to get into like a whole discussion.
Sure.
But so when I hear that you're trying to, you're trying to make sure we have materials to meet expectations, my next question is, are we going to go with expectations? And then, to try to speak to a hands-on experience and doing more laboratories and getting all of that, I can understand what that looks like and what we're getting. But where are we now? Are we not doing some of that? And then, standards, what are the standards we're trying to achieve and are achieving or not achieving right now? And so, when you say across the board is pilot, so are all classrooms and all students going to get it or how is that going to return? Just a few questions.
So, for the pilot, there are select teachers who are part of the science committee throughout the district who are piloting. It's not every teacher, but we have representation across the grade levels, across the schools. For the standards, the standards that we're trying to address are the next generation science standards. And then, for the experiences, right now, it can be varied among teachers and among, between buildings. So, for example, at Harper, we teach science, so science is a class and so the labs and things are happening there because it's a core class. At the elementary level, there's time that we need to dedicate specifically for teaching science consistently across grade levels and across schools. So, that would be at the elementary level, where we're adding the most new things, if you will, because there will be lab kits and experiment kits at the elementary level that students have not had as much exposure to as they have at junior high.
Steve, my guess, this is almost a dumb question in that it seems like we should, just of course, we want to train people to be, you know, more engaged with the world ahead of us. But what is our, I guess if we make changes, what is the long vision of what we want our kids to get out of this in terms of, is it that it really is, you know, critical thinking? And, you know, back in 1957, you know, Susan Spunick, you can issue, suddenly there's a huge emphasis put on science in America because there's a strategic reason we had to be there in science because there's a whole other country that was, looked like now is capable of putting, you know, weaponizing space, you know what I mean? I don't think we're doing that, but, you know, people have talked about in terms of, okay, science careers, there's, you know, there's a lot of science and tech careers out there that we want to prepare our kids for. Is there like a broader philosophy that we're looking for as we're equipping our students with these experiences so that they can apply them to?
Is it possible to come back with some of these questions? I appreciate everyone else tapping in, but some of these are very complex and we tend not planned on talking about science. So, is it possible to come back on a formal presentation, a very simple piece of fact? These are really good questions and I know that the team is working on them, I just want to make sure we can give them the right amount of time because I think, you know, now that we're into science, when we get into social studies, that they spread really across our curriculum, so there's literacy and math and all this stuff. So, we want to make sure that the work goes very comfortably.
Sure, and my, part of my question is tied to social studies, tied to ELA, which is where do they all come together? You know, rather than just be, well, we want our kids to be better in science, that's why we're recruiting the science program, we want our kids to be better, you know, I think, how does this all fit into the bigger picture? And I guess that's really where my question is probing. So, yeah, love your...
Yeah, we'll add a very future meeting.
So, I think we should all go to materials review.
That's right.
That is, never that is scheduled. But I think our line of questioning, our line of questions just for deal, you know, how little information we actually know about our science curriculum.
For sure.
In terms of where we're trying to go with this, so I think it's worthy of a future conversation so that we can spend more time on it than just a quick update.
March length.
For the materials review or the discussion? See, I like asking.
That's right.
I like when you chair. If I ever tried to adjust, I think somebody must have switched my chair.
Maybe you can add one more bake sale.
For that committee, a lack of the morning special ed.
On what specifically?
Both was kind of discussed, I was kind of listening to that and then kind of...
We didn't, okay.
Well, we did talk about that that would be part of the project plan, the department updates.
Yeah.
But everything that we talked about would also apply to specialized students that are in special ed as well. So, the same types of things, we have to, what we can do to help parents better prepare their kids for the next year, that would apply to all of our students. But specifically, the project plan updates in there.
Okay. Next superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Well, we have another full week and this in particular, we will culminate with a school improvement date on Friday. We're excited about that, we're continuing on our work with Canvas. We had, you know, we had this little rollout, really started to get after it with the implementation in December and now we're continuing to, helping our teachers be more comfortable with it. We have trainers coming in, so looking forward to that. A few evening events coming up in Heatherhill, as a family meeting that night, that's on the 12th. We have a district PTO meeting on the 13th and then we're off for President's Day. So, I can't remember who I was speaking with, but this, the next, I don't know, three or four weeks does represent a lull in the school year, there's a lot of good work happening in the classrooms, but, you know, the concert push from December is off and some of those things. But then we really start picking it up here in the next four weeks once we get March. Big push before spring break and then obviously right afterwards, we're full steam ahead. So, a lot of prep work happening to make sure that the end of the year goes smoothly, even though it's only the middle of February, we want to make sure that everything is aligned for the kiddos, to make sure that all, all our grade levels have a good end of the year experience. So, that's my point.
Any questions or comments? No? All right, Secretary Moonlight, Michael C. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda including the 20-06 personnel report, minutes from the January 13th board event meeting, minutes from the January 13th executive session, minutes from January 27th special board of ed meeting, minutes from the January 27th executive session, payroll for the month of January, the FOIA request and the acceptance of the National Women's Council of Women Grant Heatherhill. Second, any questions or comments?
Question. The only one that I wasn't clear on was FOIA from Katie Chen. I was trying to, did we answer that or did we get rid of one?
I think it's...
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, no, I was just, I thought, I was thinking back, I was like, I wanted, that specific, I'm like, I would love to see that attached, but I don't really need to see it or she'd pink by just to...
Oh, she's in a big room, Steve.
Roll call, please.
Yes? Kreides?
Yes.
Please drop?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes. Yes, oh, yes, sorry. And the motion has passed. I was like, yes, I didn't know. It's one of those days. Okay, let's see. Next action item, the bills for the month of February were reviewed by Mr. Lanier. Take it away. Ms. Lanier?
I have reviewed bills and the bills, there's been a line with what they should be, if they're fine, they're okay, and you have thumbs up and all that good stuff. So, I can make a motion that the bills that's presented now be...
Second. Roll call, please.
Kreides?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Please drop?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Have a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 calendar. Second, any questions?
Just briefly, just to bring back a couple of things. Did speak with our security company. It's going to be between, if we wanted to add security personnel, it's somewhere between $1600 per day, no, per hour. And then, you know, so figure out how much time you're looking for. We had a situation last year where we did expand security at a couple of the schools. Obviously, it wasn't public, but looking back at those costs, it's probably if we had, if we added an increased layer of security at three schools, my estimate back at the end of the month was somewhere around $2,500 just for those three schools.
How, how are you connecting this with the calendar?
Because, it was the election days.
Oh, okay.
We talked about whether or not we're going to be in school or out of school on the election days. Historically, we have been in school and then just want to gather some additional information on, we want to add additional security coverage on those days. My guess is it's around $2,500, $2,700 per day.
When, and you said for three of our schools, why not?
Only three of our schools are...
Oh, only three, the ones that are...
When would we have to reserve, is it something that we can just ask for the week before? Is that, does it get a pretty...
I've asked them the day before for help and they've responded. I would probably recommend this sooner than we do now.
Sure.
But I think it's something that we can work through either towards the end of this year or early summer.
So, bring it back for a, do we have to even vote on that or is it not?
We don't have to vote on it if that's what the board wants to add, we can, I mean, get a hard vote, we can throw it once, then that.
Yeah, I have a question on spending the money safely. So, I just think the better we can get it concrete, like, the better.
So, I'm hearing from the board that we want to do more security.
I would support it.
They have a long list?
Yeah.
Great, we'll take that.
And regarding that issue, so if the bill that's currently in spring bill actually does take place, and hypothetically, if that bill were to be passed so that election days are held on, I guess, in service days, I mean, correct?
Maybe. I would fight it, I would strongly fight it if it had to be this due day because it limits our flexibility on PD for teachers and those sorts of things. But to David's point, if, you know, if they say they're going to be closed on election days, then we're closed. This problem goes away. The flip side of that coin where I'm trying to figure out is if they're just approving letting high school students who are of voting age, they can leave school on an excused absence to go vote, that would not tell me that they're going to start closing schools necessarily in the future or they may do elementary, who knows? To David's point, it could be coming down the pipeline. If that is, then we'll just respond to it and look at either institute days or just taking, now attendance stays, we need, you know, essentially just extend our school year by those two days.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Please drop?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Kreides?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Have a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 staffing plan. So, second, any questions?
Yes. Could you explain the self-containment position? And that's more, that's my education, standing, with special ed, self-containment, is that an FTE for individual self-containment room?
Yes.
Okay.
Multi-grade level serves students with a number of different needs from across the district. So, there will be houses at Heatherhill, but students could come from Los Angeles.
And everywhere exists, so is this, I guess I'm making sure that this is the person that is placing a person?
No, this is a new position.
New position, so the new room.
Yes.
Okay, that's on that.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. And my second question, do, when it comes to the staffing and the numbers themselves, again, I'm kind of going back to some of the things that we talked about in the last meeting about this.
Sure.
Do we actually need to revisit looking at the district boundary lines and how that impacts the numbers of students that attend the school at any time in the future?
I think it's always good to take a look at some of those legacy decisions that have been made. You know, it certainly was in the board's purview to look at the attendance boundaries. We have software that can easily help us do that. We, last spring, then we bought Five Maps, so it's an FBI, if you remember that, oh, that's what, that member friend was looking at, the bus routes, right? So, we do have software that very easily we can kind of mess around with that and change some of those boundaries. Sure goes without saying, the political nature that's involved with changing school boundaries. So, more than happy to assist the board in grooming down that pathway, looking at the boundaries if we so choose, based on the goals you're trying to accomplish.
I think that that would be useful, exercise on a regular basis anyway, every few years. And I think that that's something that we would have to really normalize because I think that the rumor mill that would fly out the door would arrive in people's homes in a completely different message than maybe we intended. But I think that everyone can say that that would be one of those excellent things that we do, like maybe two years as we go through a process of always reviewing our existing programs and just part of the general cycle of oversight that doesn't necessarily spark alarms, okay, we're changing everything, everybody go on. Because that, that's been something in my experience as a parent before I got involved you know, these, my, my own wife is an example. She moved here from the East Coast specifically because she really loved the school that she went to as a kindergartner. And she, you know, we loved the community, but also that, that we grew up in, you know. I know in conversations, people feel like, hey, this is my school, or, you know, it tails from home, but there's big changes. People have got a really man and feel upset. So, yes, to your point, I think that we, if we're going to do that, we should do it very openly as part of the process of review. I think it would make a lot of sense as a package.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we're very clear about what we're trying to do, we can do it very easily. We can, we can drag and drop in the street and say, okay, here's what we just accomplished. But that's, it could be very simple, or it could be complex. I'd just like to know what we're, what are we trying to accomplish? Once, once we get to that point, what are we trying to accomplish? Because, yes, moving a boundary would ease overcrowding at Western. It may just should be more kids to Heather. It may do any of those things. But I don't know if those are your goals or not, right? So we can accomplish things, we don't want to include, you know, we're confused action or productivity.
The intent of my question, two different questions, was to address the, the staffing and the numbers to use in this room. Plus, as, as we start to look ahead as people having us children, again, that's going to, again, reflect in how many students we actually have at our schools. So to try, again, make sure the load is distributed as well as possible, whether we do it every year or the other year. I'm, I'm fine with that. It's just more, I think that us not speaking to it is also as bad as just like dropping the bottom to that extent.
Right, and with that also, I think if we make other decisions, that would be healthy to have. And we've also looked at these other things in terms of, of shared responsibility, so...
Just based on experience, I would just put a little bit of water on it and probably say this is probably a five to seven-year revolve and discussion. It makes people uneasy when you talk about changing boundaries.
Right.
Whether they're parents or prospective, you know, community members, we can have a house. Maybe ideally, you'd like to know if your kindergartner is going to go from kindergarten through fifth grade to Heather Hill or Los Angeles, et cetera. So, I think we just want to be very careful to this point about, just about the messaging and why we're doing this and what schedule we're using. Now, this is going to help us become an even better district that can serve the kids. Trying to maintain those class sizes where we can and just make sure that we're using all of our resources appropriately. I think that's good. Certainly a good thing. You know what we can do is, you know, we'll put it in our cloud on our department plans, but let's figure out where it actually fits. And then, as a board, we'll all know when this conversation is going to happen. But then we can also figure out how to have the conversation with the community. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just before we have the conversation with the community, and I'm just going to echo what you just said, we have to be crystal clear on why we are going through this process. Because regardless of what we say, it will alarm the community. But we all need to be on the same page as to why we are going to go through this process. And we all need to, we need to be on the same page that we want to go through the process. So let's not make assumptions that everyone across the board wants to, feels like this is a useful exercise. So I just want to make sure we take the proper steps before we jump from this motion, which I no longer remember what it is. Right, to now doing a session on talking about, you know, changing that. That's a huge leap, so. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Have a motion to approve this B resolution. So, second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Lanier?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Karytus?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Have a motion to accept the bid from Henry Brothers for the summer 2020 construction work at the cost of $3,421,678. Second. Questions? How much?
This is, this is the exact same recommendation or suggestion or support from the last meeting, correct?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Danny.
Sit down.
Um, quick question. Is all documentation present available?
Yes. You're looking for steam drums. We present them, if you, I can attach them. If you're looking for the actual libraries for Los Angeles, Heather Hill and Western.
All right, that's another question.
Yeah, we should those in.
Cam?
So we have a taxpayer that's been counting us by email and saying, hey, you know, where's the cost benefit analysis, right? And I think we should make an effort to answer the question. I don't think, it's really a separate question from what's on the agenda. And, you know, that's a question really came up at board meetings a while back. At some point today, I thought I would try to grab the answer, I just ran out of time. But, you know, I think we should try. It's a valid question for those in the audience. The question is, why are we really spending $4 million and you really need it? And it's a soft question. It's not like we're adding seats, right? It's, it's infrastructure and air conditioning that have to be done for schools. And if we ask teachers, of course, they will say, of course, you should ask air conditioning in schools. And if you ask taxpayers, especially those who are, you know, maybe over 55 and all kids are like, why aren't we, they don't need air conditioning? And so, you know, we should try to answer that, I think, more as they agree with us. I'm sure there are many other taxpayers that have the same question. And, you know, he probably won't be happy with the answer because we can't say for every dollar spent, student's test scores will go up this much. But I also just don't see how we can go forward as a school without, maybe it's unfortunately very expensive.
Yes.
Yeah. We speak to Mr. Davis.
Travel line.
What's that?
Travel line.
Hello? It's a pleasure to talk.
And this is now the question. I mean, I think for, for this dollar amount, we should be able to, each of us should be able to articulate some sort of response in terms of, how does this directly impact our students? And that's really what he's asking. And everybody should be able to do that. In our initial conversation, when we first said we wanted to do it, it was at that time, we had our first kind of go-around about why, why this is important. It was, it drove our camera conversation. Like, it's, we've been fairly transparent about our thinking and process behind this. And I think if it needs to be communicated in another way, that's great. But as a board, we've talked quite a bit about it. And the benefit that we saw.
Well, I, I think, you know, you were here for that and...
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why I...
Really, you got our taxpayer's word.
No, if it needs to be communicated, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's, that we can follow over. And then figure out just how to message that because public say it's not the one. It's not necessary for sure.
Right, because I think the, the main point that I also think is, is getting ourselves the analysis itself, but costification in terms of the tax base and technology is that that's really what you said prior to that, so...
Just we are, it's going to be an opinion-based answer. Again, I don't know that there's a, an analytical way to provide a cost benefit analysis for providing air conditioning, other than if you're choosing where to send your kids to school, you could buy a house here, or you could buy a house across the street. And your kids, when they're sitting around August 10th, are in a 90-degree classroom or a 72, you're probably going to choose that one.
But it's also the air conditioning and the steam lab, so it's more than just that.
Harsh set.
Right, so, so I think you need to just follow.
Yeah, yeah, we're right, we're right, we're talking $3 million and then we're talking about $400,000.
Project, right.
Three different buildings, right? So, you know. Sure.
It would be, it would all align. It would be a good exercise to maybe circulate the visual draft, right? Because any visual board members have their own reasons. So maybe we should circulate that and all that. Maybe we do that at our points as to why.
How about you send it to me and I'll come by?
Okay, I like that.
If that's all right, and then we'll have one.
Yeah.
One place, and I'll push it back out to everyone. Punch it up and then we'll have used, does that work? Great. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Karytus?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution for the designation of a person or persons to prepare the tentative budget? So, second. Questions? Did we do this last year?
Every year, every year.
Right, because she uses, I remember. She uses that the importance.
Whoops, anybody else?
Yeah, right. Maybe that's what it is. You gotta stick with this.
She waits for volunteers every year.
I'm talking to her, remember? Okay, roll call, please.
Craig?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Karytus?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. We have no other action items. We will not, we, we will need to adjourn for adjournment session, right? So the only thing left is a discussion of the strategic plan.
We had a couple of comments. The first one, we talked about briefly at Lorian Asher Committee. That was Carolyn's question about personalized professional learning environment. So we talked about providing a la carte options for teachers, which are two professional development and work through that question. But we spent most of our time at our last meeting was on goal one, strategy one, that first bullet, one highlight here. If you remember, the original draft, it referenced 21st century learning. And a lot of the conversation just really revolved around what does that mean? We don't improve without effective instruction. It just won't happen. So if it has to be, we took a stab at putting that strategy in a very clear actionable sentence. I don't know that this is where we want to finish, but here's where we currently are. So essentially, we removed 21st century learning and replaced that whole rule sentence. Implement instructional best practices in all school settings. Thoughts? The only change to this document is the highlighting conception.
Thank you.
Does it, does it make more sense?
It does. So, you know, as a whole, both pages, I find the front page off over the table, but it's mine. And, you know, I think that when we, as we've discussed as a board up to last year, it's been, we didn't use a lot of the adjournments, but what is, you know, what is our plan? And what is, or we're spinning along with the plan. I think that the second page is concrete enough and a significant improvement over faculty plan. So despite my bias against writing these into the place, I will gladly support it. And I appreciate that.
I'm glad, Gordon.
Sure.
Why rise? I don't know, you just move everything around. It was, it was...
Yeah, easy to remember. Oh. Black ones.
Hashtag easy.
I'm very much looking forward to learning how we're going to do stupid stuff.
I did capture a note on that, but it was going to be perfect shit. But, you know, I think it is, it's one of those things that all our kids do. Because we have kids of all levels and all, you know, kind of points in our spectrum where they need to stick their necks out and, you know, experience new challenges, rigor, struggles, so that, you know, they're better. So I think, you know, a lot of work has gone into this. And, you know, we've, we've talked about this, you know, this Janelle. Janelle's husband was an integral part of our strategic planning work. People filled out the surveys. We really used a lot of information, a lot of different perspectives to build. I'm most excited about the portion of a graduate. I think that will help us deliver on a set of commitments that we can make to the committee. To Cam's point, I like strategic plans, but only if I have given them. That's why I wrote the first goal and strategy. It just messed with me internally because, yeah, I think I know what 21st century learning means, but will it affect the next? You know, if they don't, then it's a failure. So, you know, trying to take the language to a point where it doesn't matter who you are, you understand exactly what we're trying to deliver for kids. But I think that helps. You know, there's plenty of change that we want to make visually. I don't think this layout is fine for what it is, but right now, we're only worried about the content. And Katie Sullivan's working on different ways to visually represent. So that we put it in buildings, and we talked about libraries, and how do we get it out to the community, et cetera, to make sure that our message is on there.
The only, the only point I just wanted to put a little afterthought, can we go to the second page? It's under goal five, resource equity. You and I were discussing financial, but to make sure that, you know, that we're not just looking at stability, but sustainability. Does the other sustain, what we've got going on in light of what they're becoming down the pipe? Whatever is expanding? And what they become down the pipe in regards to decision-making, sustainability.
As opposed to stability?
No, no, stability is fine, but stability and sustainability.
I think a lot of these...
I mean, except it's not changing the verb, it's more conceptual.
No, I just, no, okay. And I agree with you.
So, you know, when Fran brings back the business department plan, I mean, that's one of the things you should expect to see. How will she approach sustainability? How are we approaching the budgeting process? How are we, you know, doing our financial reviews? How are we making our projections? All those things to make sure that we're never out over our skis or in a situation where we're not, we're going to handle, you know, potentially catastrophic situation financially.
So, yes, I'm not changing, changing the verb. You send the tier, you make sure that kind of, there's a loss to where it's all to.
So can you give us your thoughts or your vision on how you plan to take this document and it becomes a living and breathing document for you and the district? And how we, like, can you give an example of how we will measure goal one?
You know, IR scores. Right, so the easiest one is what indicator will you use to judge its effectiveness, especially for number one? You know, what, what IR targets do you want to set? Do you want to set at a grade level? Do you want to set at a school, et cetera? Underneath that, though, we'll have our learning and instruction department plan that will highlight crush and development opportunities, our thoughtful classroom implementations, probably touch on capturing kids' hearts. Science implementation will be in there, the specific work that'll happen at the district. And, you know, if the school is the 1,000-foot level, call this the 2,500-foot level with grade levels and principles and curriculum grade, et cetera, are major initiatives. Underneath the learning and instruction plan, you have the school recruitment plans that build directly from that. So we'll have direct alignment from the strategic plan to the department plans to the school plans, so that we can reasonably expect that when we implement one of them, there's fidelity to our main plan and we're moving forward appropriately. And I think that's where, you know, today's point is talking about the sustainability piece. You know, there are going to be these lenses that we should expect to see in all the different plans, so that we don't worry about pace. So, you know, to Michelle's point, you know, for that goal one strategy of, you know, the Goal One, goal of providing comprehensive and personalized education supports rigorous learning and social emotional growth, that will be represented in the plans. It has to be. So in Eric's plan for Human Resources, it talks about recruitment and retention. Then all of a sudden, it also talks about our teacher mentoring and new teacher induction and all of these different things. All the departments have their role to play on helping us deliver on all five of those goals and all five of those strategies. The board will help us temper, you know what? Okay, you know, we're providing parent educational opportunities for Goal Four. Maybe in year one, this is what that looks like. In year two, though, here's how we want to extend it. So it'll be a process, an iterative process of bringing the department plans to the board, measuring them closely, figuring out which indicators that we want to be very public and transparent and objectively measured, agreeing on those, and then work in the plans.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, so then every school's school improvement plan will have a direct line to, so they will, we'll be able to look at a plan and show what the steps are, for example, that each school is using to implement, to ensure that they are implementing instructional best practices at each school.
Absolutely. Quick example, obviously, we're doing thoughtful classroom. The Learning and Instruction Plan is probably somewhere along the line to, you know, work with Harvey Silver, the specific objectives for District 161, identify the first 15 strategies that we'll use in grade, take a picture. At the building level, the school improvement plan will be quarter one. We're implementing Strategies One, Two, and Three. And here's where the training for those comes in. Here's how we're going to measure it. Here's what the teachers can expect. So here, you're looking, you see the training here, you know, that's being developed in the Learning and Instruction Plan, and all goes back to implementing the best practices in all school settings. So there must be tight alignment. It's only down time to have initiatives and decisions that are all the different ways. Obviously, each building is different, and they'll have to make some, some individual decisions about each organization, and that's fine. But overall, we have to align our work because our, we're doing Building Resources, time being one of those, so we need to be, as aligned as possible.
But did we have a discussion about, and by the way, I love all of the building reports, which, you know, we're very proud of the work that we do here. Was there discussion about more of an alignment on the way that it's presented? Remind me.
Yes.
Yes. And if so, would that tie in more directly with, with the plan so that, you know, as we see, you know, in school, you know, what this school, School A, we are aligning, you know, this socio-emotional program with Goal One. And so that there's, we had done that years ago when things actually were on the agenda, where we said, you know, okay, we're going to tag everything to our student plan. So that, because, you know, five years ago, that wasn't happening at all. It was just, you know, a list of things that we're going to talk about. Whereas, you know, the last three years, I think, or four years, we have, we have actually tagged these specifically. So is that more what you're talking about, where we're going to? More of a commonality of the manner that it's presented, even though individual schools have individual responses they make to their learning partners?
I think we all, we really do strive to be consistent. We want to present data in the same way so that board members aren't continually trying to figure out exactly what's previously set on this page and what they've brought up. At the last meeting, a difference in percentages or something along those lines, so we can go and take a look at, as far as generating consistency. I don't know that they'll learn to be identical. I don't think you want them to be because, again, the experience is of our students, doesn't matter what second grade class, in attending, they should be similar. But at the end of the day, Serene Hells is different than Folsom, right? And so they have their different community needs and, you know, areas of focus and things of that nature, as long as they're aligned here. So I think it's finding the balance of what's going to make it easy for board members to understand what we're talking about and presenting, but also understands that the buildings are, you know, autonomous organizations that are connected, obviously, to our, to our system, but there will be some differences.
But I guess, and I think you've already seen a lot of that, and I don't want to be told that, I'm not responsible. But I know for me, it would be beneficial, because we're going to talk about performance measures. Performance measure typically results, results typically given in some form data or something quantified. And so, like, so if we're going to speak to that under our goals, not the thing we'd actually be able to receive those, if people are, identify their goals in quantitative measure, we should use consistency in how we receive that. And so to, though, I agree with Steve that, yes, the verbiage was beautiful, very well-rounded, presented a nice kumbaya and warm puzzle. I don't have any statistics, so.
Because they don't exist.
They don't exist.
So if you want to do end of the year, if you want consistency, that's an end of the year. But that's a June presentation, so we can give you the I R scores so that you can have the quantitative measures that you're looking for. Because the only way, right? Because we don't have our winter map. If you're looking for true consistency, and our, our two things are consistency and the quantitative piece, we decide, the board decides how to measure all of these pieces. So if there's a metric that we want to use, we use that. And today, it's why we bring that back. Here's where, how they go third graders were, here's where our Western third graders, Serene Hells, and Folsom, et cetera. We'll have to choose that metric.
So, and thank you. So when this, the terms of mid-year S I Ps, and when they said that these are the numbers that were hit in 2019, or not, or 2020, so then say, hey, you hit that in 2019.
There's nothing in there. So I want to go back through that because they were written for I R goals, right? I R comes out in June. Right? So I R comes out in June. So the only way that we, if you're looking for an I R, you have to provide that then. The challenge of school improvement plans is they're process-based, right? So, and there will be the same thing with the departments. They'll never see anything on a department plan that we're going to come back in January and say, look, good job, Amabel, you raised such and such by two percentage points. It's just not going to happen. We will have to go back and say, we wanted to get an extra six hours worth of PD for our teachers, and we did that through staff meetings and grade level PLCs for all of those activities in order to deliver better instruction in the classroom where we have walkthroughs and use our qualitative data. Again, use, use the weight loss example, right? Trying to weigh yourself at the end of the month, you can figure out which processes are going to lead you to success. Check your watch, and you get those steps in every day. You make sure that you're checking your calories. You're doing all of those things. Stepping on a scale to see if you picked up better isn't going to make you gain weight, right? But closely monitoring the steps in the plan and all of those different pieces will tell you whether or not you can reasonably expect it. So I think what we, what we like is some clarity around which metrics would you like to see, and we can provide those. But they won't be I R based because they don't exist for another five months.
And for me, I'll be done with this topic. I'll send you a email. So.
Today?
Today.
Oh, thanks.
We'll just, so again, because I'm not having to.
Yeah, got you. I'll, I'll check it out. I'll, please, whatever response.
The only, one thing is kind of a big picture, is there some language that is not universally defined? So I think we might be able to say digital responsibility means and looks like this. But then when you take something like culturally competent staff, it's, it's a little bit more complex. And so I just wonder how you'll handle some of these pieces, just like even risk-taking, that definitely looks different, different things to different people. So I'm just wondering how, some things are really clear and straightforward, they're easy for me, and I know what demonstrates active listening, that looks a certain way for most people, but the risk-taking, culturally competent, cultural competency, some of those pieces are, need to be more clearly defined for me at some point or in some space. Because I wouldn't be, I don't know how I would be able to support or even understand or really reflect on, yes, this is something that we're growing towards if we don't first have a common set of beliefs about it.
But again, the board will decide this.
Yeah.
Because you'll, the plans will come here, but if the plans are off target, then that's why the board won't have feedback.
Okay. So what is a term commonly understood for academic risk-taking? Is there some, I don't have the answer.
Thinking outside of the box.
Well, you know, that's, it's.
Wait, there's academic risk-taking?
Well, no. Well, yeah, so there's lots of, right? So essentially, it's an environment where it's celebrated and accepted to fail. Right. So I can try things, and I'm not going to get a deep plus on it because I tried to figure it out, or I asked a question that was different from what, what was expected. But there's a space for me to try, to wrestle with things, and it's valid, and it's on, and it's encouraged. But, but that looks like this, that's a huge, you know. To the degree that I feel like I have to stay close to the standard, I start to push towards the risk is very minimal versus. So in terms of the core value, this, the reason why I'm asking is, you know, and of course, you know, looking at this, you know, I personally really appreciate risk-taking in classrooms. I love when the kids raise their hand. You know, teaching honors kids, sometimes the problem is that no one wanted to raise their hand because no one wanted to risk that they were not going to be the smart thing. There's articles. And, but, you know, and we do want people to feel, feel comfortable failing because they did try some. I don't know the word that, you know, drove Edison to continue to make life forms that didn't work until he funded the one that didn't function, or any other process along the way. So if there's a term that encapsulate that, maybe risk-taking is a little awkward or, you know, might, you know, cause people to wonder what it is.
I'm just, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot, and I'm going to take a risk and try and answer this question. And I may fail and actually try and elaborate on it. But that is actually the essence, I think, of what a risk-taker does.
Right.
You're willing to actually try and fail and then get back up, dust yourself off, and try again. And so I think that when this term was actually drafted, it was with that spirit of trying to have as a core value the willingness to say, okay, maybe that didn't work, and let's try it again, as opposed to being very methodical and robotic in saying, well, is it yes or no? Say yes, stop. Say, well, how do I look at things differently? So that when you're looking at developing a different mindset, you're, you're now looking at things much broader.
Because you can't even say educational risk-taking, because that doesn't rise anymore. But even if.
Well.
Educational risk-taking and perseverance, because we're trying to establish risk-taking in all aspects, not just in academically. I want, you know, a 20-something-year-old who's going to take a risk on a drive interview. So I stay, stays risk-taking and perseverance. That's going to be particular for each student.
I think that this particular thing is less critical to define, because I think the only reason is a very much a structural on all, on this page, is probably the thing we, first of all, we're not prepared to do it next year. And it's probably the hardest thing to teach. You can't go, you know, how do I keep people virtually, aside from, you know, it's not that easy. And so we have been firing on all cylinders, on everything else before we can tackle something like this. It's appropriate in a five-year plan because it may have been great if four years now, and I'm like, all right, let's begin with this. But I'm not, a way to accommodate.
I think what will be key is, how does the discussion and the implementation of the strategic plan go beyond this discussion here? How will principals and teachers really take ownership of the goals and how we are defining them? I mean, because it's really, to me, it's less about, and I agree, Cam, I think it's less about how do we teach you how to be a risk-taker, and more about are we creating an environment where you feel like what is okay? That is something that will be the responsibility of leadership in the building. And so, I don't know, we don't know, so we don't have to discuss it. We don't have to discuss it right now, but I think what will be key is how we can take this document and then start working, you know, on a school level with this. Because if, I think that's one of the ways that the last strategic plan failed, but I don't think that there was true ownership of that document. And so I think that our principals and our teachers really need to take ownership of this. I think the other thing is, we haven't had a lot of success with this in the past, but I feel like if we could go back to an annual update for the strategic plan, a town hall meeting, I think at the beginning of the school year is when you will have a large sample audience to want to come out and hear this. But I think it will be very important for people to hear how, you know, the district is describing all of this.
They can do a state of the district.
Right. We used to do those, and then I think in the, as Greg was like, me and Steve, at least. Seriously, I think there were like three people in the audience. So the previous superintendent started doing videotape versions of it. Right? So, you know, we don't have to go out and rate it, but I do think that it would be great for you to set the tone for the rest of the district and how, and so that people need to know how much you are valuing this document.
Absolutely.
So one last thing. There are lots of things here, and I'm happy that a building was being created, but if you, if you had to say, like, if you were going to tell us what the Cliff Notes or the heart of this document, what's the heart here for you?
The Portrait of a Graduate. Because even if I somehow forget all of those other goals.
Yeah.
If you keep your focus on the lifelong learner, the creative thinking thinker, the skilled communicator, collaborator, most connected empathetic global citizen, if we're focused on delivering those expectations for our kids, all of this other stuff about, you know, retention and recruitment and best practices, that will have had to have been addressed in order for us to do those things. Because as Cam said, we're not ready to go out and do those things. Should I, do I think we should be? Yes. But whatever. And so it is a spectrum, and it's what takes some time. And I know everyone's ready to put in that hard work, but at the end of the day, when I look at the expectations that are in the Portrait of a Graduate, they are without doubt clearly stated. Everyone, you can figure out exactly what everything means, participates on teams of that means that we can't sit and roast and lecture kids anymore. That means the kids have to hop on Google Hangout and call a kid or another classroom across the country because they are on a schedule, so there's problems, and we're going to surprise them. We have to look at how we do things differently if we're going to commit to that. So, you know, those are the big things, obviously, you know, the things that have to have in our school district, maintaining, you know, strong financial balances and sustainability, those are always important, those are not going away. But if you said, I can only rip off 25% of the paper that's out typically. It's also the most compelling reason, you know, going back to what Michelle said, that is a compelling reason for us to wake up every morning because we're committing to provide those experiences for kids. No one cares about trans budget.
We, I mean.
We can't buy new chairs. But, but you think, and all joking aside, these are very important. Our budget lines don't make teachers wake up in the morning when they're not feeling well to go to work to battle for a kid and to make sure that they have a great experience. So that's, that is where a lot of the motivation and the commitment and the clarity around the work that we're doing comes from.
Any more discussion? No? So there's still time, if you have questions or comments to.
Because we won't, we won't bring it back. I suppose we'll be there at the end of March, at the end of March, there's a reasonable waiting room. So if you have any feedback, send it, we'll make some changes. If we get an updated visual, it will put that out to everyone, we can just start launching it up, but we're still focused on the content.
What's the next step, though? So after, what happens? And what happens?
Yeah, no, I will make any final revisions. Board will approve it in March, we'll start working on department plans, come back end of May, June.
And then how will we put this to the community?
Well, see, community engagement committee started that work, and I think that's probably the next step, and I, you know, capture the piece around, you know, whether it's some sort of annual update or executive summary, that's what that looks like. We spent a lot of our time talking about how we get this out initially, and not, okay, we already put it out, you've been in it three months, I think that's the next.
So are, I know one of the things that has happened on the board, which I think is a very good thing, is the creation of committees, but are things like the distribution team then after the suggestion, are there, does it need for that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Because, you know, we're the ones that'll be doing the work. The district leadership team is made up of building leadership team members as well. And so they'll provide input. I think as we kind of move through it, we have to decide just what that committee, that committee structure looks like. Because we're, right now, I'd say we're in a modified commission, we have the committees, but we also talk about everything here as well, which the reason we have the committees is that some of you don't do that. So we'll have to figure out just what that looks like on the strategic plan, what God says, we want to keep most of this work just in the Cal kind of realm. And then as learning and instruction or HR or finance has a slip, we're going to kind of handle it in there, I'm going to pay before I bring it back. That works very well. Great.
I know we learned on the schedule, whatever happened with the start times, will that come back to us later or?
I doubt it. Just die in a while.
Whatever it stands.
I can do a lot of things, reading a report. Not a lot of motivation to change those things. We think there's a couple of other things that we can do, generally a little cost, but does not add one more disruption for parents. More than happy to bring it back, but we don't.
Okay, I just didn't see it anymore.
Yeah, now we just back it up.
All right, any more discussion on strategic plan? If not, is there any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Anything else? I think we're at the end.